Okay. Excuse me. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible. And now moment of silence. Okay. First up, we have our superintendent's announcement. No? Oh, you're right. I was going to do wrong agenda. This is a public meeting. Sorry about that, y'all. And we're going to follow the meeting's order. And this is our, we're going to have an annual financial management report in regards to the 2019-20 financial integrity rating system. We're called first.
Yes, so this is a requirement, a public hearing for the financial integrity rating system of Texas, often referred to as the first rating. And we have a number of slides here that we will not go into all of them, but we do want to share all of this information because the report itself, it's not extremely self-explanatory. So we've provided the slides that give additional information by indicator. And so as you go through the report, you'll see there are 15 indicators. We've got slides that represent each of those indicators that clarify and give further explanation. But tonight, my intent is not necessarily to go and get each of those, just to make sure that they're available to all those. This will be published on the district's website and what they follow in the following order. So as you can see from the first slide here, this is the 1920 financial rating, but it's based on the 1819 school year. And you see the possible A, B, C, and F options out there. We'll go ahead and put it out there instead of making weight. Sagin ISD did receive a superior rating with a score of 96, and we'll show a slide of that here momentarily. One of the things that I'd like to also mention, it's not something that you can find in the report itself, but the financial rating system, first rating system, has been in place since the 2002-2003 school year. And Sagin ISD has consecutively received an A superior rating in each of those years. So that's noteworthy, at least. Now, let's see. There's more work. There's only, there really are only about four slides I'm going to do anyways, so. Yeah, we got it to go? Yeah. Oh. Thank you, sir. And... Yeah, that's the one. Okay. Okay. Technical difficulties. Just if you'll go down to the slide, it's several slides down, if you go past all the indicators, you'll find the one that shows comparative analysis for the last few years. Keep going. Yes, a few more. A little bit further, and should be, right, well, yeah, one more there you go. So the one that he was just passing showed our 96 score. This shows your score by indicator for the last four years. It shows 2019 as the farthest row to the left. That is the applicable year. Why we choose to show it as 2019, it's debatable as to how you want to quantify this. As I mentioned, this is the 1920 rating, but it's based on the 1819 school year. So the bottom line is, the gray column to the, next to the far left there, that 96 score, represents our current ranking as compared to prior years. And one of the things you'll notice is that we've always ranked in the mid-90s, and there's one indicator that's really kind of held us down, and that's not uncommon for school districts. And that indicator is, I don't have the number on there, but the one where you see a 6, I think is indicator number 12. No, I think it's indicator number 8. But that is tied to districts' long-term obligations. And even prior to current legislation, long-term obligations for school districts include all your bond debt. And Sagin ISD tries to maximize its bond capacity. And we strategically do that so that we can try to keep our buildings as new as possible. And even doing that, you can see, it's not, it's not easy. So that was prior to some legislation that came into play, and I'm sure you recall, over the last couple of years, our auditors had brought it out during the financial audit. There's extensive footnote disclosure now that's resulting from the long-term obligation. It's the district's share of the TRS obligation, the post-employment benefits, is what they refer to it as. It's the state's obligation, but it's the district's share of that. And that disclosure flows through to your financial statements, and in an accounting world, it pushes your net position down. It really doesn't change anything in terms of district operations. Does it change anything in terms of district credit rating? It doesn't even change anything in terms of available fund balance. But it does change net position, which is a lot more broad in its nature. But because of that, the district continues to receive a little bit lower rating right there. Aside from that, everything else is very high marks. In most cases, you can see the highest marks. So, Mr. Lewis, if you'll go on down to required disclosures, this is, yeah, right there. So this section here is a requirement. It's not an indicator, it's not a rating, it's simply transparency. It's showing the cost of travel and training for your board of trustees and your superintendent for the applicable year. And again, in this case, for the 1819 school year. And so you can take a deep dive into that if you like. There's really nothing really surprising in any of those numbers there, so we'll continue to move on to the next item. This is hard to read, but what this is, is basically an additional disclosure. We're obligated to ask the superintendent, as well as each of the board members, A, if they have any personal relationships with local businesses, if they are receiving, if they've received any gifts from any local businesses, or any other conflicts of interest that may arise. So those are some questions there. All of those are answered in the negative. However, if you go to the next slide, one more, you'll notice these disclosures here, in a small town like Sagin, or really in any district I would imagine, it's not unlikely that you will have board members who have relationship, familial relationships with local business owners, and they may even own a business themselves. And the school district is not precluded from doing business with those businesses. But what we must do is make sure that that is disclosed in a public forum. So, and very often, when you do have these types of conflicts of interest, what that also means is that the particular board member that might have that relationship, they do not act on any item that might come to the board with regard to one of those businesses. But the disclosure is there for that very reason. It's for transparency, and there's no impropriety there. So we do have those, we have those for each of our board members, and not everybody has a conflict of interest, but they still fill out the form each year. So we go ahead and go past those, Mr. Lewis, go ahead. And then, so finally, what we have here is the actual report itself, or a copy of it. You can actually download this off the TEA's website. And what's interesting is, if you go in and you do download it off TEA's website, you can do that for any district in the state of Texas. You can also look at the ratings for all the districts in the state of Texas. One of the things that I'm often asked is, doesn't everybody get an A superior rating? And that's hardly the case. In fact, I just was looking today, and many, many districts have a B rating. There are quite a few that have a C, and sad to say, there are even those who have an F rating. So I think it really is something to be proud of, that our district has continued to maintain that A superior rating, and not take that for granted. And really, that's all I had in terms of upfront, but I'd be happy to answer any questions should anyone have any.
No questions?
I just have a statement. I just want to commend the Business Department, Tommy and his team, for their continued excellent work in ensuring that we continue to maintain a high rating. As Mr. Hilberg stated, not every district attains an A. It is a direct result of extreme fiscal responsibility, and I'm thankful to be in the position that we are in as a school district because of Mr. Hilberg's leadership and the efforts of his department. So we certainly need to recognize and acknowledge Mr. Hilberg and his team.
Took the words right out of my mouth. So thank you so much.
Well, on behalf of the Business Department, thank you.
All right, we will close up this public hearing. It is 6:43. And a little thanks to Business before we continue.
Good evening, trustees, staff, and Sagin ISD community. It is my pleasure to share a few updates from around the district. We continue to monitor COVID cases and quarantine throughout the workday, and based upon the data, yesterday we noticed the Sagin High School community that we would go remote learning today through Friday. We saw a slight uptick in COVID-related cases over the weekend, and in an abundance of caution, and following much discussion, the decision was made to shift to remote learning for the majority of our Sagin High School students. In doing so, we are able to allocate resources, namely human resources, to help at our middle and elementary schools since substitute teachers are in high demand. By doing this, our most mature and tech-savvy students, who do not need childcare, are able to work from home, and we were able to help ensure that our middle and elementary schools stay open throughout the rest of the week. And I'm proud to announce that the day went rather smoothly at the high school with a high level of student attendance and engagement. The district averaged about 20 unfulfilled substitute teacher jobs per day the last week. Moving Sagin High School to remote learning allows us to deploy hall monitors, subs, administrators, and paraprofessionals to other campuses. High school students in the essential academic program are able to remain in the face-to-face learning environment, and all extracurricular activities remain open and accessible for students at the high school. I'm glad to report that our high school teachers, staff, and students efficiently and effectively transitioned to remote learning mode, as evidenced by some of the social media posts if you follow Sagin High School. Anyone who attended Matador Stadium on Friday night can attest that our Matadors played their hearts out in the most exciting game played on the new Jack Taylor Field. After earning the district title in a thrilling win over Drifting Springs the week prior, the Matadors hosted Flugerville Hendrickson in the by-district playoff game. Unfortunately, we came up just short with the entire game and season coming down to a final play of the contest. Our athletes and coaches had a great season in spite of challenges brought on by COVID, and I am extremely proud of them. They represented Sagin with style and class, and I know that the community is proud of them too. I'm looking forward to hosting a Christmas read-aloud tomorrow at 7:00 PM on my Facebook page. Fittingly, I've chosen a book titled "A Coronavirus Christmas: The Spirit of Christmas Will Always Shine Through." I'm looking forward to reading to the young, and young at heart, and everyone is welcome. I have good information that on Thursday, Santa will be visiting classrooms virtually at the Sagin ISD elementary schools. I know that Santa is excited about spending time with students and wishing them happy holidays. Next week, Sagin ISD will be closed for the winter holiday, and I wish our school community a restful break and encourage everyone to engage in safe practices to help slow the spread of COVID. I look forward to seeing all of our students and staff upon our return in the new year. Be safe and go Matadors.
Anybody want to add anything? Anybody want to add anything about the Matador game last week?
We could go on.
We could go on for hours and hours. But it looks like you want to...
I do. I just want to say that I've waited a long time, I mean, a long time, to see the kind of spirit that I just saw in the players and the coaches, and even in the stands. And it's just, it really warms my heart, and kudos to everyone, from coaches to administration and even fans. It's a wonderful thing, and Matador pride is alive and well, so thanks to everyone.
Yeah, I think we all went to bed with our hearts bursting with joy with Matador pride.
We needed one more point, I think.
Mr. Amador?
Yes, I was suggesting that, you know, this year, next year, that the Santa, the castle should be to a U, Dr. Gutierrez, a car.
Well, we'll talk about that next year.
But sure.
Anybody else in regards to the Matador game? I was very pleased with the integrity of our players and our staff, and the fans in the stands as well. It was really an emotional night, and I think we all walked away very proud. Okay. Moving on to, next up on our agenda is audience with the board, and we did not have anyone sign up. Nope, I'm still, I'm still, I'm just discombobulated today. I apologize, Dr. Gutierrez, because you have an award to give out.
Yes, I do. As always, it is my honor and pleasure to announce the Apple Award winner every month. And for this month, this award is going to an employee who has truly gone above and beyond for students. She started the school year in September completely prepared to serve her students as a virtual teacher, this including converting space at home to simulate the learning environment that her students would experience in a face-to-face classroom environment. She embraced her new role by serving all second-grade dual-language virtual students, not only from her home campus of Rodriguez Elementary, but also Kinnicky and Potlawn Elementaries. We are fortunate to have this educator in her role as a dual-language teacher for the past three years. She is a highly committed and dedicated educator under any and all circumstances, and we are blessed that she is part of the Sagin ISD learning community. I am proud to present this month's Apple Award to the Rodriguez Elementary School's second-grade dual-language teacher, Mrs. Sheila Ramirez.
She thought she was here to answer questions.
How do you feel?
You can put your background. We have a phone set in the background. We have some of those. They're available. Hold on, the phone set is coming up. You don't want it in the air. Keep the floating phone set up.
All right, let's see. Now, that one is blocked out. Good. All right, on three. One, two, three. Excellent, thank you.
I'm actually feeling, thank you so much. I honestly think, like, I got told, and they just forgot about me.
Well deserved.
Congratulations, Sheila. Good job.
This is strike three, see if I can get it right. Next up on the agenda is audience with board, and we did not have anyone sign up this evening. So next up is item 4A, which is a proclamation of the 2021 Steering Committee and adoption guidelines. Mr. Kontu will be leading through this.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Gutierrez. Let's see if the printer will work here today. Yep, perfect. So this evening, I want to share with you all our proclamation 2021. It's a short presentation with just five slides, but really it's to go through the process, and then we'll come back again in the spring and share our recommendation for the adoption. So the proclamation for 2021 was presented in June 2019, and then it was amended in 2020. And what it was, what it calls for is for pre-K instructional material in both English and Spanish that will be used in the classroom the 2122 school year, so next school year. The material, what TEA does is they'll present this out to publishers, they have time to begin working on the items, and then they'll submit sample copies for us to review. And I'm going to share with you all the work that happened. This proclamation is being led by Dr. Williman. Dr. Williman has been doing this for the last, I guess, three years now, and so she's really versed in the, in the process. We've got a system that's worked for us. She's also part of a statewide network that vets it at the TEA level, and so it allows us to really have a good understanding of not only the process, but also the material that we're going to adopt. So just to give you guys a little bit more context about the proclamations in the last couple of years and then what's coming forward. So like I said, this is for pre-K only, both English and Spanish. A couple of years ago, it focused on adopting ELA material, both at the elementary and then the high school, so that started in 2019, and then this past school year. And then upcoming, we've got the 22 school year with health and PE. And then in the 23 school year, we have a science adoption, and that's K-12. So what the Steering Committee does is a district-level committee that includes myself, Ms. Jaramillo. It just depends, right, on the proclamation. In this case, Ms. Jaramillo, because she oversees elementary, she's, she's part of the committee. Of course, Dr. Williman steering the work, myself as the chief academic officer, and then we bring other central office staff in the mix. That's at the district level. Then we have a teacher committee. The teacher committee was selected by the principal, so Ms. Riley asked her, her grade level leads, or her, they're all pre-K, right, so her different leads at the grade level to be part of the teacher committee. They meet, and then that's when they will evaluate and make the recommendation. In January, I believe it's the 21st and not the 22nd, we're going to attend a virtual session where the, where the textbook publishers will share their material. Usually that happens face-to-face. Sometimes we invite them to central office, and we do it here. In this case, we're going to piggyback off of Region 20, and they will do that for us, and then we just get to do this and vet virtually. So that'll happen, like I said, either the 21st or the 22nd of January. The rest of the spring, we'll have each of the teachers or the committee go through the evaluation process. They will use the process that's adopted by TEA, the one that Dr. Williman is familiar with, and then they will make the final recommendation to the school board. You all adopt our curriculum, so we will bring that presentation in May. So that is our timeline, that is also our process. Today's meeting is just, or today's presentation is just information about where we are, and then if you have any questions about the pre-K adoption.
Any questions?
On your handwriting, on the Spanish and English, personally, I would like to see two or three, just for me to see.
Okay. Sure. So when we get the materials, actual sample materials, especially with the handwriting?
I'm not grading anyone.
Yep, so we do have sample material already in-house. I'll make sure that we get that for you all, and that way you all can see it. I'm not sure how many sample copies they send, but we'll definitely make it available. All right.
Well, I'm happy to hear Ms. Williman is so involved in the process. And how many teachers are on the committee?
I believe there are four or five different leads.
Okay. Good. Well, they're going to have a busy spring.
Yep.
All right. Any further questions? No? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda is closed session, but we will not be going into closed session this evening. So we'll move on to item seven, which are consent agenda items. The E, locals states that they consent agenda shall include items of a routine and/or recurring nature grouped together under one action item. All such items shall be acted upon by one vote without separate discussion. Unless a board member requests that an item be withdrawn for individual consideration, the remaining items shall be adopted under a single motion and vote as applicable. So first up, we have item A, which is approval of board minutes of team-of-eight training from November 11th, 2020, the special board meeting, November 12th, 2020, and regular meeting, November 17th, 2020. Item B is approval of tax collection reports for November 2020. Item C, approval of proposed budget amendments and financial statements for October 2020. Item D, approval of donations received November 2020. Item E, approval of district-wide vehicle maintenance parts and services, which is RFP 2101. Item F, approval of district-wide facilities, maintenance, electrical parts, parts and services, which is RFP 2104. Item G, approval of district-wide special education services, which is RFP 2105. Item H, information regarding the purchase of three 71-passenger buses and one 48-passenger special needs bus for Sagin ISD from the Rush Bus Center of Texas, LP, to the Bible Purchasing Co-op. And item I, acknowledged public information act requests for November 2020. Do any of the trustees want me to pull one of those for individual consideration? Yeah, okay. Not, do I hear a motion for approval for the consent agenda items? Thank you. Mr. Amador has given me a motion. Do I hear a second? Second from Ms. Moreno. There are no further questions. All in favor, raise your right hand. Up goes same sign. Motion carries. Seven out. Next on the agenda are our action items. Item A is consideration and approval of an order by the Board of Trustees of the Sagin Independent School District authorizing the issuance of Sagin Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2021, levying a continuing directive annual ad hoc tax for the payment of the bonds, dedicating the authority to certain members of the Board of Trustees and district staff to execute certain documents relating to the sale of the bonds and other matters incident and related thereto. And I believe Mr. Gutierrez is already here. Thank you.
Well, I had a fair amount of time. Without making light of a series matter, actually, this is exciting news. This is the second portion of the bonds that were previously approved by voters. In 2019, total of $64,700,000 was approved. We previously sold $34,700,000. This is a request to give Dr. Gutierrez the authority to execute necessary documentation for the remaining $30 million once certain benchmarks are met. And so what would those benchmarks be? We will have an opportunity to hear from Mr. Victor Quiroga. He represents Specialized Public Finance, our financial advisor. We also have here with us Mr. Arnold Kontu, and he is with Norton Fulbright, and they are our bond counsel. And both of these gentlemen do a lot of work for the district behind the scenes, and certainly the Business Department appreciates the recognition that we often get from the school board. These gentlemen certainly deserve your recognition as well. So without further ado, I'll turn this over to Mr. Victor Quiroga.
Good evening, Honorable President, members of the board, Dr. Gutierrez. I thank you for having here. Good to see everybody again. I think Mr. Hilberg did a wonderful job capping what we're here to present to you today. We prepared a brief presentation in what we call a financing plan. We prepared a brief presentation in what we call a financing plan and how we're going to move forward with the remaining bond authorization that the voters allowed us to do back in May 2019. And so the first page after the cover sheet is interest rate graph over the last 10 years. And the good views on the right side, which is where we are today, is that it's pretty, almost low to the bottom there. We're historically low interest rate environment right now. Continue to be. The district has taken advantage of that low interest rate environment the past year and a half as we've been issuing bonds as a school district. And so on the next slide is just a look at your outstanding debt that we have right now. Right now, we have outstanding about $148 million. On the bottom left-hand side there, you can see the, on a graphical basis, your average annual debt service or principal and interest that you owe on your bonds. On the next slide is a recap of what we've done, pretty much in the last 18 months. We received authorization from the community to issue up to $64.7 million on their behalf. July 2019, we issued the first installment of that, in which we issued $34.7 million, as Mr. Hilberg indicated. We received an interest rate, fixed interest rate of 3.16% for a 30-year bond. At that point, that was our lowest that we received in terms of interest rate for a 30-year bond. And then most recently, in September, we went ahead and pursued a refinancing and executed that refinancing upon your approval of this, of the district's Series 2014 bonds. And we were able to achieve taxpayer savings on that one refinancing of $11.4 million. And so we're very excited about that. And what that did, it created additional room so that you could issue this debt and fit it in into your overall repayment schedule. So we're very excited about that. On the next slide is just a recap of what we asked the voters for, the general projects that we're looking at, and the fact that we did indicate that it would cause a plus-cent INS tax rate increase over a two-year period. And you can see there the impact to the homeowners as well. And so this page here, this is how we laid out the bond issuance over the next two years. We were going to do this consecutively, one year, 2019, and then in 2020. Well, the 2000, the second portion of the $30 million, we didn't issue as quickly because the district didn't need the bonds just yet. And so we don't want to issue bonds and pay interest on money that we're not using. And so we were going to basically stall the second taxpayer increase on that at 20 cents. We, we increased the INS tax rate by 20 cents. We thought we were going to do it the following year, but we weren't, we didn't have to because we waited to issue the bonds. So basically, give the taxpayer a break and not increase the taxes quite as quickly as we thought. And so the financing goal with this one, we're going to issue $30 million. We're going to have a 30-year repayment schedule. Based on your approval this evening, we hope to get into the bond market on January 20th. At that point, we would lock in the interest rate. And based off of that action, if that goes through, we would deliver the bond proceeds to the district's construction fund on February 18th. And so this is the annual INS tax rate impact model that we've shown you before. This is showing very modest growth and really no growth moving forward. So this is pretty conservative when it comes to your property values. And you can see how the existing debt is laid out, how the new bonds would fit in. And then on the far right there, you can see the tax rate impact. And so of course, moving forward, that's going to change right now. Our INS tax rate is 38.5 cents. And then this, new issuance will cause a 2.5 cent increase to about 41 cents. But each year, your property values, if they continue to grow and outpace what we're projecting here, then that's always good news with the tax rate, and you can lower it back then. The term sheet here, the bonds are going to be structured like your existing bonds are right now, and we'll be visiting with Moody's in the near term to get another rating from them. We've applied for the permanent school fund guarantee so we can use the state's AAA rating to issue these bonds and get a better interest rate by using the AAA rating, which is the best rating available for municipal bonds. And the last page here, to go to the next page, this is the action that you're considering this evening, prepared by Mr. Cantu, who's here as well, who serves as the bond counsel. Basically, we're asking permission to move forward on what I presented to you. And if we meet the parameters as laid out here, Dr. Gutierrez could sign the final documents in January, and that, that causes us to not have to come back to you and ask for permission again. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm looking at my time. I don't see any questions. No questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. If there are no questions, I believe there's a motion. I need to have somebody make a motion. Who's full of this?
I'm moved that the Board of Trustees adopted an order authorizing the issuance of the Seguin Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2021 pursuant to a delegated sale.
I have a motion from Ms. Moreno. Do I hear a second? Second from Ms. Duncan. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven oh. Thank you all for your time this evening. Always good to see you. Thank you.
Very good, ma'am.
All right. Moving on to item 8B, action item to adopt the resolution for the assignment of fund balance to provide a one-time payment to Seguin ISD for use. You're back.
Yes. However, I, I believe that Dr. Gutierrez would like to present this item, and understand it is so. But I'd be happy to answer any financial implications, questions that anyone might have. First, we started having conversation about the possibility of doing something with compensation for our employees. However, we, we wanted to wait for various reasons until we got to later, the latter part of the, the school year. We, we discussed the, the reasoning why we weren't looking at a salary increase this year with so much uncertainty, and this new session is about to, to begin and not knowing if HB3 will, will continue as it was adopted two years ago. So we felt that it wouldn't be fiscally responsible to, to add a recurring cost by giving a salary increase. And if, if COVID had not disrupted Seguin ISD, we, we would have probably looked at a 2% salary increase for our employees, considering the fact that we gave a very healthy salary increase last year. Because we are unable to do that, we have been talking about a one-time supplemental pay related to the duties that have come with COVID and matching what we would have likely done under normal circumstances and, and to do a one-time supplemental pay that would equal to 2%, the teacher's salary average, 2% of the midpoint for all other employees, and then for non-teacher professionals, 1.5%. We've been very fortunate to, to, to be able to sustain a very healthy fund balance. And in light of, of COVID and, and the additional responsibilities and duties that every single employee has had to take on, we are making the recommendation to ask you, the Board of Trustees, to approve a one-time supplement pay. I, you all have, have, have heard from, from staff, have seen the work that they are doing. The folks in this room have taken on additional responsibilities since March, when the school district transitioned to full remote learning. I've known what additional responsibilities our employees have taken on, but having had that opportunity to walk in the shoes of multiple job roles, I, I saw firsthand how COVID has impacted their work. From a child nutrition worker to a classroom teacher, everyone has really stepped up. And, and, and everyone goes above and beyond every single day to ensure that we are providing a safe, a safe learning environment for our students. It, it's my hope that this is only for this year and that things can get back to normal for our employees, especially our teachers who are taking on the bulk of the demands that come with COVID. For example, our Seguin High School switched over to remote. And overnight, our teachers switched from face-to-face teachers to full-on virtual teachers and did it in such an amazing, seamless, flawless way today. I couldn't be more proud. But on top of that, we have staff at the high school who, without question, have gone and helped other campuses. And that's just one example from this moment in time. But the list could, could go on for, for hours in, in talking about just the, the actions that, that our employees have taken in an effort to ensure that we are, are able to continue educating students, whether it's face-to-face or virtually. And I absolutely could not be more proud to, to be in Seguin ISD because of just the heart that every single person puts into their work every single day. And it is a, a significant sum when you look at that, that overall cost of a million dollars. Fortunately, we, we have the fund balance to, to do this. It, it would result possibly later on down the road, maybe doing without some one-time costs. But we feel that at this, at this moment, we, we want to recognize those efforts. And if, if I could bring forward a recommendation for 5% or 10%, I absolutely would love to. But I think this token of appreciation will go a long way to boost morale, to also, it helps with, with retention. And, and I, I believe that the timing of it right now during the holidays will certainly go a long way for our employees.
All right. Do I have any questions or comments? Ms. Moreno?
What we have in front of us, the revised one, is not what's on the screen, am I correct?
That is correct. There's been, there, there's a, just added language on the revised one in, in the italics towards the middle section. It states, "One-time payment to all employees hired prior to October 1 and scheduled to return for the spring semester and who have not resigned effective the end of this current school year. The payment will be issued, if approved, to all qualifying employees in December 2020 as follows." So the additional clause is for those employees who are returning and who have not elected to resign effective the end of the school year.
I'm going to accept with the additional clause. I have a motion from Ms. Duncan to accept this with the amendment. Do I hear a second? Mr. Quiroga? No further questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign? Okay. I believe, motion carries six oh, Mr. Almodora? Okay. Okay. Let's go back and do this again. The phone call disrupted. It's all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion carries seven oh. Thank you. All right.
This is the two payments, right? This is the paycheck in December and then the, the additional?
Well, they will receive their normal pay in a separate payment from this. This will be a standalone payment. And all of our employees receive their payments electronically. So they will see two electronic payments to their account.
Between that being the proper order, I would like to have a workshop to discuss the overpaid people and what they get, and their percentages.
You, you want a workshop, or would you just like a written summary?
I mean, when anyone talks, I would like to discuss the people that are the overlord and the percentage that they get. Because if I'm earning $20,000 a year, $25, whatever, you give me 2%, it helps. But I think that's not enough. If I'm getting paid $100,000 and you give me 1%, it's meaningless.
Okay. I'll be watching.
Let's go further.
I think as it relates to employee pay and, and looking at those, what those percentages would be for people, we'll certainly be able to share that information along with the Tazby study that we conducted 2018 and, and the efforts we've made to, to be more competitive with those pay grades. Be more than glad to, to share that information. Absolutely.
Yes, I agree. It should be competitive, but it's not competitive for us folks, especially now. There can be more money than we get. At least we get zero.
Yeah. As Dr. Gutierrez said, I think we would all give them more if we could.
Y'all can also receive the 2%.
2%?
I appreciate that. I feel so much better. I was just going to take a quick peek. But that is reflective, the 2018 Tazby study and the salary research is reflected in our compensation booklet for this year or not?
Well, the study is separate from the compensation booklet, but the, the, the study was used to update the compensation booklet.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 8C, which is possible approval of a resolution requesting Governor Abbott to include school district personnel in the official expert vaccine allotment panel's definition of frontline workers. And Dr. Gutierrez, you addressed this somewhat, but I think you may want to elaborate.
Yes, I think one of the concerns as, as we've learned that the vaccine is, is now available, and we've seen on media that healthcare workers, deservingly so, are starting to receive the vaccine. And, and we've heard that the government has stated that essential workers would be a priority. We certainly feel that our, our teachers are essential workers. And in order for the economy to continue to grow or to not take a, a further hit, it's essential that schools are open. Therefore, our, our teachers are on the front lines. And so what you, you've seen here is a resolution that, that we're asking for the board to consider adopting, requesting that teachers be considered essential and made a priority for the vaccine and, and making that request through a resolution to, to Governor Abbott.
All right. Thank you. With this particular resolution, before we take a vote, Mr. Jenkins and I are going to read it aloud. A resolution requesting Governor Abbott to include public school district personnel in the official expert vaccine allotment panel's definition of frontline workers, whereas Seguin Independent School District Board of Trustees or Board recognizes that the United States government, state of Texas, and local health authorities have declared a disaster and emergency regarding coronavirus slash COVID-19, hereafter called COVID-19, and is spread across the state and nation and continue to extend these declarations.
Whereas the Board recognizes that COVID-19 is unforeseen and unavoidable emergency of urgent public necessity, that the World Health Organization has declared COVID-19 a pandemic, and that additional emergency declarations have been and will continue to be issued in the form of days, weeks, and months. Whereas the public schools in the state of Texas impact millions of students and personnel and have profound effect on educational, social, economic, and public health issues and are integral to the general welfare of the state. Whereas the public schools in the state of Texas are charged with the task of caring for, educating, nourishing, and providing extracurricular activities to millions of Texas students five days a week, thus allowing a vast number of parents the opportunity to engage in gainful employment to support and nurture wholesome home environments for our Texas students. Whereas the public schools of Texas are dependent on dedicated school personnel from administrators, teachers, educational and professional specialists to clerical, maintenance, transportation, child nutrition, security, and other support staff to conduct the day-to-day operations of our schools and ensure the mission goal of efficient delivery of instruction. Whereas although our district and our personnel, as well, districts across the state have responded, responded in response to the challenges brought forth by COVID-19 regarding the delivery of instruction, issues persist in the quality of learning, especially among students that would most benefit from live face-to-face instruction. Whereas the Texas Department of Health, the Texas Department of Health recently reported 31,678 students and 18,742 school employees tested positive for COVID-19. And the Board, having a substantial public interest in protecting the health and safety of its students, staff, and community, therefore desires to ensure that the school district... and community, therefore desires to ensure that the school district and community be prepared for the full assistance possible and life of COVID-19. Whereas a substantial number of school district employees are more susceptible to complications and/or death for COVID-19 due to age or pre-existing medical conditions. Whereas in periods that show the significant efforts of the public and private sectors effective vaccines may soon be available to administer to our citizens in an effort to thwart the spread of COVID-19 pandemic and return our lives to a semblance of normality and stability.
Whereas the state of Texas convened a team of external and internal subject matter experts into the Expert Vaccine Allotment Panel, or EBAC, to develop vaccine allocation strategies as recommended to the Texas Commissioner of Health, including guiding principles for the equitable distribution of vaccine across the state, which appropriately prioritize making vaccines available to frontline workers and vulnerable populations. Whereas in order to balance the educational, health, and economic issues described above, the Governor of Texas, the Texas Commission of Education, and the Texas Education Agency prescribe guidelines and directives to public school districts to currently make available live instruction to those students who request it, and to continue to aggressively phase-in live instruction for all students in the near future. Whereas the Board Administration are following advice and directives from federal, state, and local authorities in responding to COVID-19. Whereas the Texas public school district personnel are essential to the day-to-day operations of a district as described above, and critical for the resumption of live face-to-face instruction. Whereas Mr. Ruben Cortez Jr., District 2, member of the State Board of Education, recently requested of Governor Abbott that school district employees statewide be defined as frontline workers for the purpose of vaccine allocation, and the Board wishes to join Mr. Cortez and support him in his request to the Governor. Are there any comments or questions? Not? All in favor, do I hear a motion? Mr. Almodoro, you motioned. Okay, Mr. motion. Mr. Almodoro has motioned that he would like to approve this resolution. Is there a second? Ms. Pritten done? Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And Ms. Ramirez, do we need to all stay to sign this?
No.
Nope? Okay, all right. And then moving on to our last action item, 8D, which is Personnel Action for Professional Employees. I didn't know you were back there.
Good evening, President Jimenez, Dr. Gutierrez, and the Board of Trustees. We would ask that the Board of Trustees recognize and acknowledge the new professional hires for the 2021 school year, with resignations also listed below. We are very happy to extend employment to Cynthia Espasza. She's going to be part of the Student Services Department. She has three years of experience with communities and school, is familiar with our demographics, and I know that the Student Services is very excited to have her join the team. Monica Franco is also joining the LLS. She has 25 years of experience, most recently with East Central. She's had experience as a lead teacher and as the academic facilitator. So we are very fortunate to have Ms. Franco join our team.
Mrs. Espasza, will she, will that be leaving a hole or an opening in our communities and schools?
Yes, they will be filling that position.
They're working to fill that out.
I would say that someone that has been with us for 28 years, who serves more than a state.
Absolutely. Mr. Cortez has been with Seguin ISD for 28 years, and he is electing to...
We have an meeting, and I'm glad you're even present.
Our next meeting will be prior to his actual last day. We'll take a look at that, see if he's willing. All right. You graduated together? Does that mean you're going to retire soon?
No.
He can't, he can't erase you.
I would say, I would say, 28 years, it serves more than a friend back, and we...
Well, I do want to remind everyone that we do have the retirement reception, that they will be a part of. Hopefully, it will be an in-person event this year. It is a really nice event that we do put on for those individuals who retire, whether it's five years with the district or 40 years. They're invited to celebrate and really receive acknowledgement.
All right, do I hear a motion for approval of these acknowledgements? Mr. Al, who's right there? Okay, Mr. Jenkins, thank you. Thank you. I got Blair on these, I can't, I see double people and double people. I have a motion for Mr. Jenkins and a second for Ms. Duncan. There's no more discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Seven oh. Thank you. And last up, I guess, if there are any comments or concerns the Board wants to bring forward or questions. Ms. Moreno is ready. First of all, I'd like to thank my fellow board members for the vote of confidence in electing me as the secretary at the meeting that I wasn't at.
That's what happens with the Senate.
So thank you very much. The other comment I have is that 2020 has certainly been a challenging year for all of us, from our staff, to our leadership team, to our superintendent, to our fellow board members. But we continue to move in a direction of success, and I am so proud to be a part of this district and to be a part of this board, and that we continue, because I know 2021 has got to be a lot better. And so... Merry Christmas to everyone. I think we all agree with that. It's got to be better. Anybody else? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Mr. Almodoro, second? Mr. Quiroga, okay. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand, and we're going to adjourn at 7:29.